Welcome to the School Board Candidates Forum. Will everyone please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Welcome to the School Board Candidates Forum. The Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring this forum. I'm Dawn Schulberg and I'm the Chair of the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce and also owner of Premier Dance Academy in downtown Prior Lake. The candidates will introduce themselves shortly. Thank you for attending and just a friendly reminder to the attendees, please turn off all cell phones at this time. Also refrain from talking amongst one another during the forum and please hold all applause until the end of the forum. In fairness, I will stop and reread the questions if these things occur. Thank you for participating in the School Board Candidates Forum. Thank you to our candidates, our attendees, our city staff and viewers. We think this is a great way for our businesses and residents to get to know their candidates before they cast their vote on November 8th. We feel this is an asset for the citizens and business owners of Prior Lake to be informed. I have prepared questions and the audience may also submit questions on the note cards in the back and someone will pick them up during the forum. We will host this event from 7 to approximately 8:30 PM. We have several rules for tonight, just so we can stay on schedule and keep everything fair. I will call on every candidate to introduce themselves and tell us why they are running. This part of the forum will be up to two minutes in length. After the introductions, I will ask prepared questions. These questions are limited to up to one minute. There will be no opportunity for rebuttals until your final comments at the conclusion of the forum. At the conclusion of the forum, each candidate will have a final three minutes to summarize their position, offer any rebuttal, and offer why residents should vote for them in November. I have a timekeeper in the front row to keep everyone on time. Please abide by following the time rules. This is a two-minute question. I will begin with candidate Drews. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Thanks Dawn. On behalf of all of the candidates up here, I think I'd first like to thank everybody who is in attendance tonight and all of those watching online and the Chamber for hosting this event so that we can all get to know our candidates. My name is Jonathan Drews. My wife Dawn and I moved into Savage in 1998 when our son Henry was about three weeks old. Today, he's a senior. Time flies. We have a daughter Lily who is a junior and a daughter Bella Rose, our baby who is a seventh grader. Over the years, I've had lots of conversations with people around bonfires at the hockey arena, just around town, about things involving the school, about what's happening with the schools. And our kids. And one of the things that I think has changed in a generation is when I was a kid and people talked about our kids, they meant everybody's kids. Today, when we talk about our kids, I think too often we mean mine. And I think that's regrettable. As a community, I think we need to rally around kids. Those conversations often turned into people suggesting that I ought to be running for school board. I don't think it happened because of anything I said or because people thought I had all the answers. I think it was because I asked questions and I listened. Mostly though, I think people could just sense that education is important to me and the kids in this community are important to me, our kids. Serving on the school board is the best way for somebody who cares about kids to make an impact in the community. I want to be a voice for our children and a voice in our community for our kids. And I ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Thank you Dawn. Thank you Sandy and the Chamber again for hosting tonight. I am Melissa Anger. I am a current member of the school board and I'm running for reelection. I'm a Prior Lake School District resident of 16 years. I have three students, three recent graduates of Prior Lake High School, and I'm a college graduate myself. I've spent about the last 30 years as a sales professional and I'm currently in the medical device industry as a hospital consultant. My years in our school district, my parenting of my three children in our public school system, my professional business experience give me a good basis for serving on our board. The district's recent experience with the failed referendum makes it clear we really need to modify our direction. It's left us with a problem that we have to solve that's overcrowding in our classrooms and securing our buildings. If we want to solve these problems, we need the support of the community who voted no on the referendum. To get that support, we need to be realistic, we need to be honest, we need to be transparent and have that delegation delineation between needs and wants. We need to stop making excuses as to why the referendum failed and develop a proposal which will gain the support of the voters and the parents. As you know, I didn't support the referendum. I wasn't comfortable with a $150 million referendum that had a lot of wants in it. The post-referendum survey told us that voters agreed with me and our community told us we needed to do a better job. We needed to find the priorities and one of those being student safety and that has got to be a top priority. We can't have an excuse of a failed referendum not to have our buildings secure. So I'm anxious to get on to the work of formulating a referendum proposal that'll do that and have the full input of the residents that they deserve, that demonstrates open and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate France.
Hi, I'm Mary France and I'm running for school board. I do want to reiterate and thank all the candidates and the Chamber as well as all the supporters out there. It's really appreciated. And by nature, the fact that there's eight people running, obviously this is a very important position and it's very needed to have the best candidates that we possibly can to run for these positions. I want to become a member of the board because I believe I can use my business skills, financial skills and technical skills to actually contribute and add and complement to the existing skills and people that are on the board. My background in STEM and STEM education, business and financial education and experience will complement others on the school board. And in addition, I have actually been an advocate for education most of my adult life. I have actually been in, I've tutored, I have mentored, I have worked in community ed in five different states and in the state of Minnesota, currently in three different districts. I actually run the local STEM mentoring program and I'm the district director for the state of Minnesota. I do believe that the school board is at a crossroads. Public perception is low. So here I am, sticking my neck out and wanting to help provide better solutions and contribute to an overall better solution for the school board. As I've stated, I have spent a large portion of my adult life volunteering, coaching, teaching, et cetera. This isn't a personal agenda. This is not a personal goal. It certainly isn't a power play. I simply love to help and I want to be there to help. That's why I'm running and I believe that the diversity of my skillsets could very much be used on the school board.
Thank you. Candidate Masias, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Masias. I am a resident of Savage. I've been here for about 15 years. I have two daughters that are in schools and I have a vested interest to make sure that their future is the best in classes as we can have it. The main reason that I am here primarily has to do with the civic duty, that call to serve, to not only take from the society but also to provide. I actually grew up in a different country and I chose to come here and I realized the beauty, the magic, the preciousness that this country has to offer. And I do believe that it is at this level, at the local level, where we can provide those things that can make real changes in our community. I also believe that the sustainability and the long-term greatness of our schools are in jeopardy. I do see the accelerated growth that has happened and it is our duty as citizens to do what we can, to maintain, to achieve a healthy balance with the resources that we have and to, as an engineer, to systematically, methodically address those issues, understanding that we have limited resources and that we need to prioritize, that we need to act as a unified board and to, again, ensure that we can do the best that we can. I think we have great talent. I think we have all the ingredients to maintain the high performance level that our school has. It is up to us to ensure that those decisions are optimized based on the resources that we have. So I hope you vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenhour, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Hi, my name is Chad Rittenhour. I also would like to thank you for holding this event. I'm a one-term school board member so far. I'm a father of two children who are just starting their education in the district. 12-year resident. October will be my 15th wedding anniversary. I retired from the military after 22 years and with that service, I wanted to keep serving the community and that is why I'm running. I see that we need to focus on our needs versus wants and be the adults in the room who can say, you know, not everything is a need and we need to focus, we need to optimize on what we can get done. I want to keep going on. I push for transparency and keep building on our programs like Laola Delago, MinCaps and our FabLab.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Hi, thank you for everyone attending tonight and for hosting this forum for us. Again, my name is Leigh Shimick. My husband is Steve. We've lived in the district for 36 years. We have three adult children, two are married and they've gifted us with five grandchildren. So that's exciting for me. They're obviously done with school. They went on from Prior Lake to University of St. Thomas, graduated there with high honors and all are living back in the Prior Lake area. So it's important to me that we continue to keep our schools at least at the level they're at, if not better, hopefully better. I was on the school board for 13 years. I left the school board two years ago, so I've only been off for two years, but I found out that I missed the excitement of being on the board, of being someone that can make a difference with our education of our students. I'm passionate about education and children. That's always been my biggest priority. I believe that every child should have an opportunity to have an excellent education. I'm proud of the previous work we've done on the board. And when I left the board, the board was in a very well-respected time in the community. It had high expectations and it achieved many of those expectations. I'd like to see that continue. But when I started on the board 13 years ago, well 15 now, the board was in a very challenging time. We had financial struggles, we had educational issues, and when I left the board, most of those issues were gone. And I'm very proud of all of the work that we did to get to that point. I feel that I was very instrumental in obtaining that level of excellence and I'm running for school board to ensure that that continues into the future for my grandchildren as well as everyone else's children.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. My name is Josh Welch. I've lived in the Prior Lake-Savage area for about 11 years now. Currently reside in Prior Lake with my wife and our two daughters, the youngest of which just entered into the Prior Lake-Savage school system. So we've got two out there now. Over the last 11 years that we've been down here, I've always been interested in doing more for the community, but between home and family and career, never seemed like the right time to step forward and take that action. This past spring, as a referendum came up, I wasn't sure initially how I felt about that, started doing some investigation into it and some learning about that. And in that process, I started learning more about the school district and what makes it run and the fact that it's not something that just happens to us, but it's something that we all need to participate in and that it's only as good as the people that are involved in that district. As a result of those learnings and the subsequent failure of the referendum, I felt that I needed to do more personally, get involved with the district and to try to keep it going down the strong path that it's been going down so far. And so it is that I decided now is the time for me to raise my hand and say that I'm willing to serve and to ask for the support of this community so that I can sit on the school board and make sure that our schools are strong so that we can keep our communities strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Treasure White, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running.
Good evening. My name is Dan White. I'd like to thank everybody for coming as well. Thank Dawn for moderating. I had the privilege of being directed by Dawn in several musical productions a number of years ago and I don't remember her being this soft-spoken, so this is a nice change for me. I'm a lifelong resident of the district. My wife and I both graduated from Prior Lake High School and we chose to make this our home. I served on the board from 1993 until 2005 and then was reelected again in 2012. We have three adult children, Richard, Anthony and Rose, who all graduated from Prior Lake High School. I'm running because I very much value the chance to serve the community where I was raised and where I was educated. You know, my uncle served on the school board in the 1960s. My father served three terms encompassing most of the 1970s. So this kind of public service has been ingrained in me since I was a child. It's been a high honor to serve our school district in this way and I would very much look forward to the challenge of continuing to do so. I believe because of some of the things I just mentioned, that I perhaps sit in a unique position of understanding the history of our school district as well as everyone else here having a vested interest in its future. I believe people that know me or have worked with me would tell you that I am honest, I'm a good listener, I'm level-headed, I use common sense to make my decisions. And while I take this job very seriously, I tend not to take myself too seriously. I would be humbled and honored to continue to serve the community in this way and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. You now have one minute to answer this question and I will begin with Board Director Anger. What do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
As a parent and a professional, I guess I'm equally passionate about our community and affording everyone from young couples to seniors who often lose their home because they can't afford to pay their tax bill. I care about everyone in between. I'm dedicated to the idea that we want to balance the needs of the schools with the needs of the taxpayers to ensure that we have a win-win result as much as possible. That's very important. Each of the current board members was elected to be an independent voice for our constituents. And with that comes the responsibility to ask the questions that need to be asked and then to make decisions with our peers based on our conscience and based on sound common sense. And that's what I've tried to do. Voting no on the referendum was not an easy decision for me. It wasn't viewed favorably with my colleagues, but it's important to do the right thing. Thank you.
Candidate France, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
Well, first of all, being on the school board is an awesome responsibility and I have served on many public and private boards before, nonprofits, and also helped multiple educational institutions. I believe and have experienced that the primary responsibility of the school board is to act as a public fiduciary, both public voice as well as public dollars. Setting and approving policy and representing a public voice for the comprehensive school district constituents, but most importantly, the kids. Like I said, it can be difficult as well as rewarding as well as every other board position I've ever been on. You've got to make difficult decisions. When I speak to people in the community about what it means to be on the board, they often think that it's an elected position, it's more like a legislative position where you're supposed to come and represent a specific purpose or a voice or something like that. Well, the school board's a little bit different. The school board actually has an ultimate due diligence for oversight.
Thank you. Candidate Masias, what do you see as the board's role and responsibility?
Thank you. Primarily, I would say that it's for somebody that can act and reflect the decisions that's best for all students, putting aside our personal interests and putting aside our biases. Somebody that can act with transparency, with honesty, and I think primarily, somebody that can bring consensus to the table. We all have our different opinions. We all have our priorities. We all have our needs. But I think it is the primary role of this board to create consensus and that sometimes means that we're not going to get what we all want, but that we can live with that decision. And once that decision is made, to reflect that we are united and that we all believe and buy in the decision that we have made. We have our constraints, we have our needs, we have our priorities and we have to listen to our stakeholders and understand their feedback and make sure that those folks that are going to be impacted are part of the decision-making of the board.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenhour, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
Our roles and responsibilities are to first, maintain transparency and our financial restraint and accountability. We also need to make sure that everything we do is aligning the money that we take from the citizens with what they expect and what we need to do to educate our children.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
I believe the responsibilities of the board are first, to provide the best environment, the best means to educate all of our students in a well-rounded fashion and so that they can reach their full potential while also being fiscally responsible. That's the challenge. I also believe that it's the board's responsibility to support the mission of the district, a mission that was developed by the community, and follow what that community desires and what they value. The role of the board member is governance, setting direction and getting input from all stakeholders. It's oversight, it's not doing the day-to-day job of the administrators, that's what we've hired them for. It's also to set policy and work with the superintendent. I'm one of seven on the board. Differences do occur, but when all is said and done, we must reach consensus and move forward as a single unit.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
Firstly, I see the school board as responsible for working with the administration to set strategic goals and directions for the district and then working to hold them accountable to those goals, both performance and budgetary-minded. Secondly, I see the school board as the connective tissue that binds the community with the schools so that we can be the ears and the eyes of the district in the schools and bringing the needs and wants of the community to the school district, to see those reflected within the district and also to be the mouth of the school district and speaking back to our community and letting them know what it is that the district is doing and why it is that we are pursuing those goals. It is the duty of the board, I believe at the end of the day, to act as a single unit. While there may be seven individuals, there needs to be a consensus developed at the end of the day so that they can move forward with an effective policy and that the community can have trust that the words they hear from the board are going to be delivered upon.
Thank you. Clerk Treasure White, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
Well, I see the board's role pretty simply. It has three main parts. We have one employee and that's the superintendent of schools and our job is to hold her accountable to manage the district in an effective manner, to make sure she hires quality people, that she carries out the vision of the board to the best of her ability. Secondly, to formulate effective policy so that our staff has clear direction on the day-to-day operations of the school district. And third, we do have some limited taxing authority and we try to do this prudently, conservatively, in a manner that allows the school to be properly funded. Above and beyond that, we need to be visible about activities, athletic events, be open to conversations with whomever and whoever, especially those that disagree with us, and to be an advocate for the things that are happening around the district and an advocate for the kids.
Thank you. Question number two, and a reminder, you have one minute. I'm so sorry.
Dawn, may I interrupt?
Yes, you may interrupt. Please interrupt me. Candidate Drews, what do you see as the board's role and responsibilities? My apologies.
It's tricky, I wouldn't want your job either. The first role of a board is to be the community's voice in the school system, to develop a vision for what this community wants our schools to be. Dan is correct. The school board hires one person and that's the superintendent. The school board needs to create that vision, hire a superintendent and support the administration and the educators as they carry out the board's vision for the community. A board needs to work collaboratively, needs to work together. Everyone should voice their own opinion and vote their conscience, but when a decision is made, it should be supported by all. Underlying all of that is we need to do what's right for our kids.
Thank you again, my apologies. Question number two, and I will start with candidate France. What motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
As I've stated, I've dedicated most of my adult life to helping with educational opportunities. I am a passionate advocate for everything educational, from the extracurricular activities to the sporting events, to improving and maintaining the school district's ratings as well as facilities. I have also been a Lego League coach, I've coached camp intervention and I am the Washington DC advocate for the state of Minnesota, as I stated, for STEM education. So basically, I am interested in continuing that public service. And as a mother of a child and a 16-year resident of this particular district, I feel it's very important that I dedicate my skills and continue to dedicate my skills and my time to board service and as an advisor to the boards as well as a member of the board.
Thank you. Candidate Masias, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
Thank you. Again, like most of us, I think the idea of civic duty is ingrained in us and I think that we believe that we can provide our two cents to make our system better. I am a commissioner for the city of Savage. I started this a couple of years ago because I believe that it is again, up to us to make our systems better. I believe strongly in the principles and the foundation of continuous improving, of raising that bar higher and higher. Because I believe that if you understand the data, if you understand the facts, if you understand the root cause of problems, not just the symptoms, that you can be a more effective problem solver, that you can make things better. Fixing complex problems is something that I've been trained on and I believe that I can marry the technical side of things with the people's skills and again, work together in a collaborative environment with communication, with commitment to achieve results.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenhour, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
It is also community service. And that being said, I'm also stating that this will be the last time I run, so after this next term, when I hopefully get reelected, I'm not going to be a career politician. But between that, also making sure that our district goes on with its financial restraint and accountability and improve our transparency. What we've managed to do in the last few years of having more transparency is a good step and I want to continue doing that along with finishing, building out our new innovative programs like Laola Delago, FabLab and our MinCaps program.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
I have the experience necessary to serve on the board. I have excellent leadership and communication skills. I'm a good listener and more importantly, I'm a common sense thinker. I like to look at the whole picture before I make any decisions and with those skills, I think I can be very beneficial to the board. I think I can be very beneficial to the board, as I've shown in the past. I also think it's our responsibility as everyone else that we, that those that can should step forward and serve. And as I mentioned before, I have grandchildren coming into the district, and I would like to see them have at least as good of an opportunity or better than our children have now and as well as everyone else's children.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
Simply put, I love this community. I'm a relative newcomer here at 11 years. Many folks have spent their entire lives in this community and probably have a similar idea. I believe the schools are a foundational aspect of the community, that they are an anchor for the community, and that a strong school system results in a strong community. And so I want to be able to serve and contribute to that. My two girls, freshly into the school system, I want to make sure that we have a strong school system for them and for all the ones that should follow behind them. And so it is that I ask the community for their support.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
Well, in addition to what I shared in my opening comments, my motivation really boils down to one thing, and that's me feeling like there's some unfinished business that needs to be tended to. You know, when I was asked to run in 2012 again, I agreed to give it a try in part because I thought perhaps my previous experience might be helpful during a time of transition that the board was facing. I believe we have hired the right person to lead us, and now we must find a way to deal with the extraordinary growth that we are currently undertaking. I look forward to engaging our community to develop a plan that balances our needs with the community's willingness and also ability to pay. If granted another term, this would be my top priority.
Thank you. Candidate Drews, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
Teddy Roosevelt was often quoted with a statement about how easy it is to be a critic. I don't like to be a critic. When my kids were little and Henry was playing hockey, I would sit in the stands for a couple of days and then realized I needed to be on the ice and helping and coaching instead of sitting back and watching. When there's a challenge, people need to step up and get involved to help find solutions. So I want to build consensus. I want to listen to the community, and I want to be the voice of the kids in the room and take care of it and get it done.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, what motivates you to seek reelection or to become a board member?
Well, like Ms. Shimick, I'm a good listener to the public, and it's very important in this time of unprecedented growth. I see it really as three parts. First of all, our school district has about an $82 million budget each year to support operations and additionally to spend millions in capital programs, all coming from taxpayers. And in the business world, this would be considered a fairly good mid-sized business. And we're like a board of directors, and we have to establish direction and policy and provide financial oversight. It's our obligation to our students and to the taxpayers who pay the bill. We need to ask the questions. We need to speak up if we don't get the answers that we like. And we need to work against consultants and contracts that appear to be overpaid by millions of dollars. It's obvious that we've failed in our financial oversight when that happens. So we need transparency. We're lacking that, and it's very important in the business world, and it's important as a standard of transparency should be higher in our school district as well.
Thank you. Now I will read additional questions from this audience and the public that were submitted. I will begin with candidate Macias. What will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
Excellent question. And for the record, I do believe that that's probably the most important challenge that we face, the accelerated growth that we are experiencing. It's a good thing. However, the sustainability of the great high-performance school that we have, it's at stake. First of all, I would really understand or try to understand what are those inputs? What are those causes? What are those motivators that are bringing people here? And what can we do with the resources that we have? How can we optimize? How can we work on what's urgent and important, understanding that we have limited resources and that we have limited funds to make those decisions that serve best all students? Easier said than done, but I do believe that if we really understand the impact, the inputs, the outputs, what are those causes, we can do best decisions, educated decisions, not based on opinions but on facts and data.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenour, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
First thing, we need to look for the answers, and I've been pushing for this discussion in our boardroom for a while now. We need to look at having a referendum that makes sense, that only adds space for teachers' rooms and score space with any other questions being secondary. I will also, and I have been pushing for different answers, like we could look at renting space, having multiple shifts. Unfortunately, that we may come down to that answer, or, you know, I'm up for any input that the teachers and administration have.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
Well, first, I'd want to find out if all those spaces really need to be repurposed. So I'd want an analysis of the space needs in the district, see what we have to give up and what we don't have to give up, what we could get by without. I'd want to address the issue of the enrollment in the different schools. Hate to say boundary line changes, but maybe that might have to happen at least on a temporary basis. I'd want to make sure we looked at all the options. I'd want to hear from the community as to what they value is what's important, and we'd make the decisions based on that.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
I suspect we're at a point where quick resolutions are going to be hard to come by. The time has probably been passed for larger-scale resolutions that have been done. At this point in time, I think the key will be for the board to be highly supportive of the administration as they work through at their local facility level and try to identify opportunities for better space use in those locations. Ideas like closing open enrollment sooner, looking at the attendance boundaries, as candidate Shimick mentioned, are going to have to come into play, and those are very difficult conversations to have. But I think in terms of near-term addressing of the space, things will have to be addressed.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
Like Mr. Welch alluded to, a referendum is no longer a quick solution. So I think in the near term, we have to think perhaps drastically. I mean, someone mentioned split shifts. That's definitely a possibility. Personally, I've never really been in favor of taking the specialists out of their room. It's not good for teacher morale. I long agree with the mantra that music makes you smarter, and if that means that we have to tick up our classroom sizes in order for those spaces to be permanent, that may be something we have to consider. But in the short term, adding space is certainly not an option yet, but we're going to have to think completely globally and maybe outside the box in order to get those rooms permanent again.
Thank you. Candidate Drews, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
I will echo what Dan said. There are no easy choices right now. They're all hard choices. It's inevitable that we are very likely going to be looking at boundary changes. We need to maximize the space in every facility that we have. That is more than likely going to happen. People are not going to like it, but it's going to happen. I agree that art and music are a critical, critical part of kids' education. Those spaces need to be dedicated, and if it is changing class sizes, if it's changing boundaries, we have to do what needs to be done. Music and art are critical parts of an education.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
You know, it's timely that we are asked this question tonight. It was just at our study session this week that we discussed what can we do? Because we have sustained growth. We have growth at all levels. And one of the first things that we talked about potentially is closing open enrollment. We can do that with K through 10. We cannot do that for 11th and 12th graders. We should be addressing this at the next board meeting, and as soon as possible, we can make cost-effective changes such as the locker shortage. We can, Jim Del Wu and I have come up with some ideas there. Third, we can lease. We can repurpose space, and boundary changes are not out of the question. I'm a huge supporter of art, music. I grew up in Bloomington Public Schools, and we had a violin program that I played violin for 10 years. We don't have a lot of those things. I wish we did. I want to support arts every step of the way, and it's something that we just can't continue to not have the space that they need to.
Thank you. Candidate France, what will you do to generate quick resolution of the loss of key learning spaces, art room, music room, computer lab, library, et cetera?
Well, first of all, the passage of the referendum last year would not have stopped the current loss of learning spaces because it still would have been more of a long-term solution to build more schools and add capacity. However, we do need to look at the percentage of open enrollment that we're allowing in. Minnesota Statute 124D.03 allows the school system to set capacity limits by grade level to limit open enrollment or actually decrease it with the request of a waiver, and that's something that I think they could look at right away. The other thing is, is I do believe that they need to look at reallocating the space that does exist, and that was also talked about in the study session this week. But the reallocation means not to lose those key learning spaces, but simply to maybe use the cafeteria when it's not in use, et cetera, put up temporary walls. I am a strong advocate of music and art, and one of the reasons why I've been a strong advocate of the education is for introducing an orchestra into prior league.
Thank you. Next question goes to Board Director Rittenour. It's a one-word answer, please. Did you vote yes or no to the failed referendum?
A one-word answer would not really work for me in this case since I got to vote on this one twice. So in a public setting, I did vote yes because we do need it. Privately, no.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick? Candidate Welch?
Yes.
Clerk Treasurer White?
Yes.
Candidate Drews?
Yes.
Board Director Anger?
No.
Candidate France?
I voted no.
Candidate Macias?
NA. I did not live in the district at the time, so I was not eligible to vote, but I would have voted yes.
Thank you. Next question begins with candidate Shimick. What will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
I have to say, I haven't given that any thought. I'm not sure that I would do anything about it until I knew more about what the situation was. So I guess I would need more research and more information to make a decision about transgender bathrooms in the schools.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
I don't expect that I would do anything to prevent that from happening, not without a lot more information behind the situation at hand. From a practical perspective, there's a lot of options there in terms of usage of stalls and other privacy measures there that I fail to frequently see why this is such a big issue. At a locker room level, I think it becomes a much more complex issue, and socially, I don't know that we are on the curve there yet where that is going to work well, and that's going to require more thought and effort in order to sort out that particular issue.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
Well, until there's a much clearer set of laws, rules, and regulations, I would tend to err on the side that we're doing right now, which is handling it on a case-by-case basis. I would not, I suppose globally, be in support of having transgender bathrooms school-wide or district-wide. But for the time being, I am more than willing to address this on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, sorry, did I skip you again? Really? Just so far.
Hey, honey, is our bill current at premier?
Oh, my gosh. What will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools, candidate Drews?
Dan's white. Dan White is right. It's a case-by-case basis. That question to me right now is a solution searching for a problem. Perhaps I'm just not aware that we have a challenge. Case-by-case basis, there should be, I strongly suspect, guidance coming from above in the near future.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
Well, currently, I sit on the policy committee for our district, and I believe that school policies should promote the rights and the safety of every student, every single student. Opening bathrooms and locker rooms and showers to students of the opposite biological sex would violate the safety and the privacy rights of the rest of the student body. And boys and girls have a reason to be concerned about the right to be protected and to be private. Males and females have a fundamental human right to privacy, and I feel that way about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate France, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
Well, first of all, I don't think we need to prevent or promote them. Kids who are transgender don't want to be called out, labeled, or stigmatized, and again, we're talking about kids here. The way other school districts, even in Indiana and North Carolina, have dealt with this is by developing a protocol to deal with it on a case-by-case basis, is communication and a handling protocol that allows the privacy of all individuals, particularly the protection of the privacy of the children, and the respect and due diligence of the community to respect those wishes. I don't believe, I've never heard of an actual problem resulting from a transgender issue here in a locker room or a bathroom, and until it does become an issue, which it hasn't historically, I totally agree on a case-by-case basis, but a consistent protocol that the staff is trained on to deal with the complaints or anything else that may come from concerns from the teachers or parents.
Thank you. Candidate Macias, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our schools?
I agree with a lot of you. I don't think I have all the data or all the facts to make informed decisions. I think the case-by-case is a viable solution. However, I also would want to say that as a potential member of this board, we have to, again, realize that there's more urgent and important things, and if perhaps we're going to aggravate 99% of the population to serve the needs of a 1%, I just don't see the math in there. I think that we have better, more important things to do in putting all the humanitarian side to one side. We do need to understand that we have limited resources, and perhaps we have better things to work on.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenour, what will you do to prevent transgender bathrooms from coming into our school?
Yes, unfortunately, we do have many things that are more important to work on. Yes, unfortunately, we do have many things that are more important to work on, but this one will, in my opinion, come to the forefront. We will be sued into capitulation if we don't do anything. What I think we need to do right now is start asking our representatives for some guidance and some protection from this coming down, from these laws coming down forcing us to do that. And that is the main thing I would do. Until we have laws, we will need to take it on a case-by-case basis, but we need to all contact our legislatures and legislature and ask them to help hold us harmless.
Thank you. Next question begins with Candidate Welch. It has been documented that both Wayzetta and Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
I am not aware of all the numbers behind the construction projects in Wayzetta and Stillwater. I'm not aware of what that 2% number constituted as opposed to what the 5.9% number constituted in terms of Nexus. There could be a variety of different services that aren't necessarily included in either one of those that may be included in the other one. So I think without having a clear picture of how precisely those numbers compare, I can't say why one would be different than the other. In the school board meetings I've sat in so far and that I have listened to, it seems that Nexus has been on par with the industry in terms of what we are being charged for their services, and I have not seen a compelling reason to question the relationship that we have with Nexus, and I am a bit confused as to why it keeps coming up.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Well, like Mr. Welch said, I'm not sure what was included in that 2%. Perhaps like in the past, when we were using Bossar Construction, John Bossar lived in Prior Lake and gave us a little bit of a hometown discount. For all I know, that's what happened. I do know that 2% is not the industry standard and that 6% is. And in fact, all the percentages that are being charged under the Nexus contract are right in line with the industry. And at this time, I see no reason to move away from Nexus. They have been stellar in their work, they've been honest with us, they've gotten and worked out on time, on or under budget, and so at this point, I have no reason to be looking elsewhere.
Thank you. Candidate Drews, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Being respectful of taxpayer money is an important part of the role of a school board member. I have an awful lot of confidence in the people who are on our board right now. I've attended many meetings where Nexus has been a part of the discussion. Citizens for Accountable Government brought a list of concerns. The board went through each of them, went through the contract, and Nexus has worked with the district to make some changes to the language to clarify some things, but line by line, every concern was found to be unfounded. Nexus Solutions seems to be a valuable partner for this district.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Well, first of all, I congratulate them on negotiating a great percentage. I wish that we could have that. Yes, there are many concerns about Nexus as the information is brought forth to us and to the board and through data requests. I question why Nexus was initially selected over 17 other qualified businesses when they didn't have any schools that they were working with before we started working with them. I question why Nexus has already been paid $9 million on $5.6 million worth of contracts. We haven't gotten the questions there. There's been no legal review, either verbally or written, on that, and I'm concerned about that. And the protocol that that standard business also have three bids, there weren't three bids, and these are implications for the next phase, phase three. And we need to protect the district so that we can have everything we have for our students and for our teachers.
Thank you. Candidate France, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Well, I can only speak for what I've learned about Stillwater and my involvement with the AIA, which is the basis for the Nexus contract. It's a default master services agreement, and it actually had it tiered. It went all the way up to 8.95% for architectural fees and down to a couple percentage points for different types of maintenance. The difference with Stillwater and the referendum and the percentage is because the Nexus contract was a generic contract that covers both facilities maintenance as well as their oversight of the bidding process for the school. That's highly unusual. They use the same firm to do both. I think that's part of the issue, and that's where the confusion of the percentages come in. But I do know that what Stillwater did is they had a construction firm come in, several of them, in which their construction management firm managed the RFP process, they did a design-build process, they showed the community all of the options and the diagrams that were out there, and then paid them 2% to manage that process.
Candidate Macias, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Unfortunately, I don't know the specifics of the Wayzetta deal. If they were able to negotiate such rates, good for them. However, we're only talking about cost here. There's three main elements when we're talking about projects like that, but the quality of their services, their schedule, and cost. So, cost alone does not represent a whole picture on the services and the schedule that they are receiving. That being said, I do believe that this board has done a good job, and I hope that we continue to do a good job, being fiscally responsible, understanding that we're trying to get the best services for the money that our taxpayers provide.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenour, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
I absolutely believe that we need more space, and to that end, anything that gets in the way of us building and completing that would be, I would be into rebidding and checking out other solutions. If they come back with a rebid process and they are the best, I would continue with them. If not, I would want to change to the other providers.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, it has been documented that both Wayzetta School District and Stillwater School District completed referendums. Each paid their construction manager 2%. Why is this school board paying Nexus 5.95%? This is wasting taxpayer money. Would you keep Nexus Solutions?
Well, as has been mentioned before, I'd want to find out what they were getting for their 2% versus our 5.9. I have some experience with Nexus before I left the board, and they were very thorough in everything they did. They did some of the extras, they did a lot of oversight. I don't know the specifics of Wayzetta or Stillwater, but I know that they did an excellent job for us when I was on the board, and so, yes, I would keep Nexus. They got the work done on time and most of the time under budget.
Thank you. Next question, beginning with Clerk Treasurer White. What do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
Well, I think, it may not be completely ingrained in the strategic plan, but I think that moving forward, the most important thing we're doing is our movement toward individualized learning. A lot of the problems that we have with achievement gaps and with different ethnic groups and things like that, I believe by moving toward this model, all that can go away. I think if you let the teachers focus on the individual, find their strengths, certainly be sensitive to their cultural ways of communicating and those kinds of things, but focus on the individual, their style of learning, and allow the teachers to use the gifts and the education that they have to move toward that, I think that, to me, is the most significant thing that we're doing right now. It's a complete shift in the cookie-cutter approach to public education that has been the history of public education in America, and the more that we can individualize it, I think the better off our students will be.
Thank you. Candidate Drews, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
I think, as we've been talking about tonight, the most important issue that this district faces is our space needs and our growth. I think in the short run, we need to figure out what to do to make immediate changes for the next couple of years, boundary changes, maximizing space, doing what we need to do to create an environment where students can continue to learn, to do what's right for our kids. In the long run, we need to work within the community, with all the stakeholders, gain consensus, work as a board to come up with the next plan, and go out as a unified board with a solution to the community. What we can't do is try to solve it one piece at a time.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
Growth is so important and offering a very positive learning environment for our students. We have families coming in to our community, and they're staying. And at last check, we had 22,000 homes in the district, we had 215 new homes just last year, and 780 students new to our district in the last two years. We need to continue to offer them a positive learning environment and our commitment to small class sizes and either maintaining what we have or reducing class sizes. It's very important so that we can foster that environmental learning.
Thank you. Candidate France, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
Well, I think the key word here is strategy, and one of the things that I think the district needs to improve upon is your strategic outlook, not just from a capacity standpoint, but also from a curriculum standpoint, and preparing our students for the 21st century education, from technology to the arts to the music to everything else. It's moving very, very fast, but the key word here is really strategy, and one of the things that I like to see changed is each time there is a planning document put out, that it doesn't just extend into the next year. We don't know what the state's going to give us as far as dollars goes every year because it is heavily dependent on tax percentages and levies, et cetera, but we do know what we plan to do, and therefore, we can plan proactively for that and prevent the situations that we're having today, like the lack of classroom space, lack of capacity, funds, allocation issues, et cetera.
Thank you. Candidate Macias, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
I was very pleased to see that the school system has this, the values, the vision, and the strategic directions. There are six beautifully written objectives. I personally like the one that talks about engaging families, communities, to strengthen a culture of respect, sustainability, and inclusion. To me, what's perhaps most important is how do you measure this? How do you quantify? How do you know if you're winning or losing? What are those metrics? What are those performance indicators to say, are we winning or losing? And where can we devote our efforts and funds? I do believe, just to generalize, that the accelerated growth that we're seeing is the one that has to have the most attention. We want to maintain the high performance, the greatness that we have in our schools, and we have some interesting challenges ahead.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenour, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
Well, strategic plan being long-term, we need to focus on individualization, things like Laola del Lago, our fab lab, and MinCaps give more options like that, adding more strands to MinCaps. But we also need to focus on the near term to get that done, which is adding more rooms, more room for students and more teachers, because the class size is the most important thing right now, in my opinion.
Thank you. What do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
I think the most important part is actually in our mission. It's to educate all learners, to reach their full potential as contributing and protective members of an ever-changing global community, and I think that's been the basis of the direction that this district has wanted to go in, and meeting those needs is our challenge. We need to meet the needs of all students, not the high learners and not the low learners, not just the culturally challenged students, but all students, because there's a lot of average students that need to be challenged as well, and I think we need to help to meet those needs too, so I believe it's our mission.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what do you believe is the most important part of the district's strategic plan, and how would you advance it?
Obviously, growth is getting a lot of attention right now, rightly so, and I think that's going to be an ongoing story for the district and something that will have to be continued to be managed for some time to come. Addressing those facility needs should not overshadow the need to make sure that we are delivering the top educational experience for our students. Offering new types of educational programs like the MinCaps, like Laola del Lago, where you give them really different styles of learning, whether it's a language immersion or whether it's just kind of a more business-focused approach to learning, and allowing them to adapt to these different styles so that we can better prepare them for going out into the world, I think is the most important part of the mission.
Thank you. Next question begins with Candidate Drews. What changes would you make to the failed referendum?
I think the changes to the referendum need to start with the process. We need to make sure that on the front end, we need to gather as much input from the community as possible. We need to make sure that we're listening, and we need to make sure that we are doing what this community values. Would I make specific changes? Premature for me. I wasn't a part of the design and every infinite detail of the first one. I'd love to be a part of every detail of the second one, and I make it a point to hear what people want and what we need and to balance those two things.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
Well, we really have to zero in like we did the first time on needs versus wants. It was too pricey. The voters told us that. There was considerable discomfort around the project consultant, we've discussed that. Lack of proper community input is so important. Our community was telling us that there needed to be a public hearing of a full board, an opportunity for one person at a time to address everyone rather than having breakouts in a building. We need to have neighbors hearing what other neighbors think, and that's going to be a key part of our next referendum so that we can gain the support of the community and the voters that voted no. We need their support, we need to help them understand that we have real growth, and we need to do that as soon as possible.
Thank you. Candidate France, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
I did quite a bit of the selling to the community, et cetera, but quite frankly, what I would like to see is what worked for Stillwater, what worked for Maple Grove, all that, is that present the options to the community, engage in open forum, and let people ask questions and be part of the decision. Basically, you're increasing your stakeholder breadth. The other thing is to actually articulate very clearly to the constituents in the community who are going to be paying for this... who are going to be paying for this, that what you plan on doing with this, how you're planning on gauging the accordion effect of the capacity growth and, well, in the future, as demographics change, the capacity decrease that's going to happen and how you plan to handle that. Because I don't think this community is going to tolerate "keep going back to the well" type of attitude. But the design bid process in multiple districts has worked very, very well. It allows the community to actually see the options on the table, to actually visualize the pictures of the new buildings and what it's going to do for them, and they have the opportunity to give feedback and feel like they're part of the solution.
Thank you. Candidate Macias, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
I agree with a lot of you. I think that we need to concentrate in making sure that the stakeholders, the people that are forking the bill, have a say. They are the ones who are going to be mostly impacted. And without their buy-in, if you want to kill a project, well, don't let the people that are going to be impacted know what's going on. I think that we need to understand the needs versus the wants and be very clear on what is necessary versus what is just wanted. I think we need to concentrate on facts and less on opinions. And I think in order to melt all this together, we need to act with transparency, with trust. We need to ensure that there is trust within the people that are part of this. Without that element of trust and confidence in one another, there is no element of common buy-in. And I think that we're all looking for the same solutions. A tweak here or there might make a big decision whether it passes or not. Thanks.
Board Director Rittenhour, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
I would start with the process that determined what we needed. I would get the yes and the no camps together and let them talk to each other and read the facts and help determine what was needed. This would help with the transparency. When they come forward with a decision to the board of what they recommend, we would look at it, and if there is anything that's controversial, as a board, I would take that out and have that be an optional item, a secondary question. Make sure that we get what's absolutely needed, and if there is anything that's controversial and considered not needed, it would be a secondary question or tertiary.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
I think, as some people have mentioned before, maybe the process was a little bit flawed. I think first you need to educate the community on what the needs are, how money is obtained, how it can be spent in the district. We can't take money from one area and spend it on another area. So we need to make sure that everyone understands that. And then we need to find out what this community values. I know there was criticism on certain areas that were going to be built, and if the community doesn't value that, then maybe that's not where we're putting our money. But I believe that mostly, we need to get input from all the stakeholders to find out what their values are, what they want to see in education, and what the impact is for our district. If we have a great district or we have a mediocre district, how it's going to impact us.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
What I've seen in regards to the referendum, both from the vote no campaign last spring and from the survey results that they were going over Monday night, was a lot of uncertainty. We even saw uncertainty from the folks who voted for the referendum. They weren't necessarily sure about the need for it, but they wanted to support the schools. We can't have that uncertainty when we're going out there asking for $100 million. So I think most important, as we move forward and look to address the space issues, we need to make certain that the citizens of Prior Lake are certain about what the need is, what the money is going to, and how we're going to be delivering upon that. That means engaging them from the beginning and soliciting their input, making sure that the information is out there in good detail in regards to how the project is being delivered, and then making sure that we deliver upon that project the way it's been promised.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, what changes would you make to the failed referendum?
Well, I think it's really all about process. I mean, every town is different. What may work in Maple Grove or other towns may not work here. We're completely different animals. And I think the process does have to change. Something changed somewhere along the line, and I believe that perhaps, and the board has just started talking about this, maybe the board takes a step back and gives the administration and the different stakeholders throughout the community the ability to actually look at everything that we've looked at and design something for us to take a look at, for us to vote on. I think we all, if you've been doing this long enough, sometimes you think you're up here and you're on the board and you don't necessarily have all the answers, maybe you've heard all the answers. And that can't be true if we're going to be successful. So I think the process is what has to change, and that perhaps we take a step back and let the community own this thing from the get-go.
Thank you. We have time for one last question. I will note that this question was submitted several times, so this is the final question. I will begin with Board Director Anger. What schools do your children go to?
I'm proud to say my three sons go to the University of St. Thomas.
Thank you. Candidate France?
My youngest, Jordan, goes to Baniled St. Margaret's.
Candidate Macias?
Both of my girls go to Redtail.
Board Director Rittenhour?
My oldest goes to Laola Del Lago, and my youngest is not in school yet.
Candidate Shimick?
All three of my children graduated from Prior Lake High School.
Candidate Welch?
Our oldest goes to Jeffrey Pond, and our youngest just started in at Laola Del Lago.
Clerk Treasurer White?
Like Mrs. Shimick, all of my children have graduated, but during their time here in Prior Lake, with the exception of Redtail Ridge and Glendale, I believe that one of them or all of them attended every other building in town.
Candidate Drews?
Two at Prior Lake High School and my youngest at Hidden Oaks. And along the way, it's been Pond's Edge, Westwood, Oak Ridge, however many there have been along the way, just about all of them.
I will now ask you to summarize your position and state why the residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th. You will have three minutes. I will begin with Candidate France.
Again, I want to thank the chamber, all the candidates and the supporters, and the city and the district for this opportunity and for the forum itself. Next week, I traveled to Washington, DC, and I meet with about 16 lieutenant governors, as well as corporate leaders from all 50 states, to talk about education funding, STEM funding, the STEM Connector Program, and the mentoring program for young girls, minorities, and veterans throughout the state. I currently am a mentor for several high school girls at North High School in Minneapolis, at Minnetonka, Roseville, and also here now, in Prior Lake, and added today, actually, when they won the scholarship. My goal has always been to serve in educational endeavors. I've done that since well before I had kids. I actually worked, I've lived in five or six different states. I've worked in community ed, I've taught community ed, I've been an adjunct professor. I'm a strong advocate for education. I'm a strong advocate particularly for early childhood education and also for music education, because I've seen a direct correlation with music programs and art programs that actually directly affect test scores, not only in your standard statistics, but I've actually personally seen this. I feel that I bring a wide variety of skills and a diverse thought process that I could contribute to the board. I believe that I really could help, as well as learn, from the sport. I'm humbled enough to think I don't know everything, that's for sure. But I really do believe that I could bring a diverse set of thought and leadership, as well as professionalism, and provide clarity and research to this current board. I have volunteered and advised for several districts in the state of Minnesota. They bring me in to do a variety of different services, and I'm very proud of that, and I've learned a lot about the education system in Minnesota in the 16 years I've been here. Before I decided where to send my son to school, I actually sat through classrooms in over 14 different areas between elementary, well, actually preschool, elementary, and then somewhat in middle school and then in high school. I wanted to make sure that he had a well-rounded education, but also, I work across the river, so sometimes it's a little hard to get to all the events if you've got to travel down 169. But I'm very proud of the fact that I learned a lot, I made a lot of connections, and I will always continue to serve in the educational community. I hope that I have your vote. I think I could provide a lot of benefit, and I think that I could work very, very well with others. I value the roles and responsibilities of the board. I understand the comments of the board, or the roles of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Macias, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
Very good. Thank you. Just like most of you, I'm also running for school board, because I truly believe in the importance of our future, and the importance of education, and how education can really bring prosperity to a community and to us as a whole. I do believe in civic duty. I do believe that it is up to us to make things better. We should not complain and say, somebody should do something about this. Maybe it's up to us to do some things. I have lived in other countries, and I have seen other things. As I mentioned in my beginning statements, we do have something very precious here, and I think sometimes we take this for granted. Sometimes you don't know what you had until you lose it, and I would hate for us to lose the greatness that we have in this community and in the school in general. I do want to thank, by the way, the members now and previously, because they really have created a good, solid foundation for the school. I think it's just up to us to build upon that and just make it better. I have worked in the private sector as an engineer for about 20 years. During those years, I've kind of been trained to understand problems, to understand that sometimes you jump to fix the symptom. But if you continue fixing the symptom, then that means that you never solved the problem. You really need to understand the cause. And there's tools, there's techniques that will allow a group like this to not only understand the data, the hard side of things, but to work on the soft side of things, the people skills. And I do believe that I can bring some of that to this team and to communicate, to collaborate, to cooperate. I think we have very different opinions, which is healthy. I think that we can build upon that to leverage our ideas, our experiences, but at the same time, to realize that we're working for one cause, and that's our kids. To put our biases aside, to put our special interests aside, I have two of them, by the way, there are 10 and 7. But as I said, we need to work on this together. We do have limited resources, we do have limited funds, we have to be good stewards of the resources that we have, to be fiscally responsible, and to also inflict a good dose of common sense. I think sometimes we overlook that, that sometimes common sense is not very common. We need to look at the sustainability, we need to look at the growth, we need to look at what we have, where we want to be. We have to be conscientious of our goals, right? We have to be understanding the vision, and not just the vision, but to marry vision with the action, right? If we just have a vision and we don't act upon it, well, it's just a dream. And if we just act and don't have vision, it's just temporary. That's why I'm running for school board.
Thank you. Board Director Rittenhour, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
Education is one of the most important things for community and to keep our republic on track. I have no other motivation other than serving and improving our district. I want to make sure that we keep going with improving our transparency and keep on with the financial restraint and accountability. That's it.
Thank you. Candidate Shimick, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
As I previously said, I have 13 years of experience on the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board, five as chairperson. I've worked on other boards in the Scott County, on the St. Francis Hospital Board, and the CAP Agency Board. It seems like there's another one, I can't think of it right now. I've also been involved in the Minnesota State High School League. I believe that children need to have the best opportunities to be educated, both in and out of the classroom. I support the arts and the athletics, as well as being educated in a classroom setting. I'm very passionate about education, I'm very proud of the work that I've done on the board. I approach things from a common sense viewpoint. I don't answer questions real quickly, because I like to hear all the information and gather as much as I can before I make a decision. And my decision is always then based on what's best for kids. I have strong leadership skills, I have good communication skills, and I listen. I like to hear what other people have to say. That's important in making my decisions. I'll work hard to provide a safe, supportive environment that offers the best educational opportunities for our children, and I'll try and remain as fiscally responsible as we possibly can be. We're a district of best practice, I'm proud of that. When I started on the board, we were not at that point. The other districts were looking at us, not for our best practice, but just to see what we were doing, and we would have to go to them and find out what was going on with best practice. They would be taking our administrators, our teachers. We were kind of a starting point, I guess, for a lot of people. Now we keep people here, and the other districts are looking at us, because we have best practice. And we've earned the respect of the other districts to collaborate with them. And our administrators, our staff are staying here, because they want to be here. They're not looking for the larger schools to go to, because we are one of the largest schools. I'm very proud of that. My past board work, I feel I was very instrumental in all of that happening. I have a Facebook page, @leishimick. I'd invite you to look at that, and I hope you'll vote for me in November.
Thank you. Candidate Welch, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
We have a great district. That's a fact. We have a district that delivers high results, that is fiscally responsible, and provides an anchor for the community that is valued. It is my deepest desire to see that continue, not only for my children, but for the children that come behind them. I bring attributes of open-mindedness, thoughtfulness, compassion, and a true belief that public education is a public good. I'm open to new ideas, and I digest new information rapidly, and I'm willing to look for new solutions as new problems arise. I'm inherently conservative and slow to come to opinions, which I think is valuable, insofar as the policies and decisions that we make today are going to be affecting the district for many years to come. And so a thoughtful, reasoned approach to all of our decision-making is essential. And I look forward to hearing your support in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer White, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
Well, I've long believed, no offense to Annette, that a school board is the highest calling of a local public office. We're responsible for over 8,000 kids. It's a heavy burden that I take very seriously. This has been my life's application, the way that I've chosen to serve the community that I live in. I've tried to be a servant leader, thinking of myself as less than those who I serve and who I represent. I certainly don't have all the answers, but I know that as a board, when we work together, we can always find them eventually. We have so many cool things happening in this district right now. MinCaps could transform the way we do education in our high school completely in a very, very positive way, and we are just at the very beginning of it. I can't wait to come back in 10 years and see how that thing has exploded.
I can't wait to come back in 10 years and see how that thing has exploded. I believe we have a great leader, a great young leader who has the perfect set of skills to lead us in the direction that we're going, and I'd be honored to help see all of this through for the next four years. I don't know. Some people think, wonder why I'm even here. I have had a kid in the school district for seven years. None of them live in town, so the chances of having a grandkid here are pretty small. But this is my home, and this is how I've been able to get back to the community that gave me so much. So I would be humbled, again, and honored to be able to serve you for four more years, and I would appreciate your vote in November.
Thank you. Candidate Drews, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
Is there a more thankless job in the community than being on the school board? Actually, I think the guys that, and Gal said, are on the soil and water conservation district probably get even less credit than we do. But school board's a close second, so why run? I have 8,313 reasons why my name is going to be on the ballot in November. Three of those reasons reside at my house. Two of them reside at the Reitzes, two of them at the Basils, a couple of them at the Harpers who are out in the audience tonight. It's the students of this district. Families of this district need a voice on this board who can bring people together and build consensus about the important issues that face this district. Dawn and I are blessed to have had our three children receive an exceptional educational experience in Prior Lake Savage Schools. Years ago, members of the school board made the decisions that propelled this district to be named a top public school district in the state and in the nation recently. I'm grateful to those leaders. Now it's my turn. Working together, we can make sure that the children of this community, our kids, can look forward to a brighter tomorrow in Prior Lake Savage Schools. Thank you to all of you who came out tonight. I would be honored to have your vote, and I hope to serve you in the coming years.
Thank you. Board Director Anger, please summarize your position and state why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 8th.
Well, I'm an info gatherer. I'm a researcher by trade, by nature. I love to dig in, make sure that we're using the taxpayers' dollar wisely. I've owned a business. I've employed young people. I've paid rent, made a bottom line, and know how to read a P and L. And I've been a substitute teacher at St. Mike's over the years. My sister is a teacher in a high school, and every year she prays for a good class and how hard they work. And, you know, we need to get the security of our staff and our students in our schools to make sure that they have a safe place to work, so let's make that happen. Let's get the classroom space that we need. You know, let's get the transparency that the public is asking for, that the parents are wanting. That robust discussion that involves the public is so important. Let's get our sessions, for-study sessions televised, or at least on audiotape and on our website, and let's get those things online because we don't need to be doing data requests to find out the public's information. Let's have a spirit of openness and integrity. That's what we've come to know in Prior Lake and in Savage, wonderful communities. Let's have more informing, or excuse me, less informing and more involving of our community. It's an exciting time for our growth, and it's exciting to be a part of it. I'm extremely grateful to what the district has done for my three sons, and I appreciate everything and every day that this administration does. And I'm excited and hopeful and honored if you would grant me your vote in November. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends all of our questions and summaries. On behalf of myself, thank you to the city of Prior Lake, Dave, Kristin, the candidates, the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce, and all the attendees and viewers. The candidate forum will be broadcast live on the local school access cable channel and then rebroadcast until the election. The school will also have the video available online on its website until the election. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday, November 8th. Thank you and have a nice evening.